Perhaps Mark isn't going to be able to join us tonight, so let's open the Board of Selectmen meeting for the Town of Nahat for October 1st, 2020. We're going to start with opening comments, starting with a coronavirus update from Deb Murphy and John Kulan. There you go, Deb.
Yep, okay, thanks. So, the update we have is great. We still have no new cases. We haven't had a case since September 23rd. And last night, when the new data came out for the last two weeks from the state, we are still in the very, very lowest risk category that there is, which is the gray category. In our town, we had, we've had a total of 1,601 people tested. In the last two weeks, we've had 229 people tested. The state reported that we had one positive, which really is incorrect. There was one case reported to Nahat, but it was an accident. It was really meant for me. So, we did not pick up another case. So, we continue to, we continue to do great. I was in the school. One day this week, I went down to meet with Cheryl Felicio, the school nurse. They're doing a great job at the school. It's a lot, it's a lot of work for the teachers and for the nurses, I will say that. But kids were really, really happy to be in school. And so far, everything's going great there. So, we are getting ready on October 5th. Here's John now to go into the Phase 3 Step 2, because we meet the criteria of being low risk for the last three weeks. So, I don't know, John, if you want to get into that detail. I think you muted, John.
Yeah. Okay. How's that? Is that better?
Yep, that sounds good, John, thanks.
Oh, good. So, catch me up, please, as I'm just joining. How far have you gotten, Deb?
I was just given the numbers update, John, but I thought you might want to talk about the next step with Phase 3 Step 2.
All right. A few days ago, the governor's office put out an update, well, actually, an emergency order, rescinding the emergency order number 46. And this is to go into effect this coming Monday. Dan Scrip did an excellent job reviewing what was put out and comparing it and localizing it. And we have several changes. A, an emphasis that, and anyone with outdoor gatherings where there's going to be more than 50 attendees, they should provide, shall provide notice to the local Board of Health at least one week before the event, at least to attempt that. Outdoor gatherings, private residences and in private backyards will, will stay with a maximum of 50. However, other venues in lower-risk communities such as Nahat will go to a maximum of 100 from the 50 that it was previously at. The, there was a, an emphasis, again, that we keep the social distancing at six feet and that indoor gatherings are limited to 25 persons in single enclosed indoor space. And for gatherings of more than 10 people, all persons over the age of five must wear face cover, face covering. And it was, it was mentioned that the local licensing authority may suspend or revoke a liquor license or take other appropriate enforcement action upon proof that the licensee violated or permitted a violation, violated.
Looks like John got cut off there. I can, I can follow up on that. The enforcement mechanism with the most recent emergency order does not really change much. It is essentially the same. Up there is John.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. You lost me. I had a call coming in. The political and religious activities are exempted, however, as long as they follow the COVID-19 safety rules and capacity limitations. And those are in the sector-specific guidelines in the Places of Worship section at mass.gov, Coronavirus Guidelines. There's a, there's a lot going on, obviously. The executive order itself is, I printed it, six pages long. However, thankfully, our community stays in the lower-risk category, which gives us some basis upon which to make some, some decisions, case by case. But the citizens who are interested in running an event of any type are being asked to continue what we have been doing, and that is not only submit an event request form if it is to occur on public property, but to submit a COVID-19 compliance plan, which would come to me and I would contact the person submitting it to go over the specifics of the event and make suggestions if need be. And we would work toward approving a plan. And thus far, the plans that I have received, and I've mentioned this in previous meetings, the plans have been well thought out and the, the execution of the plans has generally been very good. So, I look forward to continue working with folks from town. Would, would now be a good time to touch on Halloween specifically, or do you want to save that till later in the meeting?
We, we could touch on it now. I've talked to the Select, well, I talked to Selectman Canty. I don't know if I've got a chance to talk to you about it yet, Josh. We have gotten a few calls from folks in town asking what, you know, what we're going to do. And I talked to Deb Murphy a little bit as well about, you know, what guidance is out there. It doesn't really seem like we're getting a ton of guidance from the state. There was, I did do some research and saw some guidance from the CDC about different, I guess, like, risk-level activities that folks can participate in on Halloween. You know, for the most part, the town, in my opinion, and again, we haven't really discussed this as a group yet, in my opinion, we don't really have an, like, a way to enforce any type of limitation on participating in Halloween. And for that reason, I think it'd be best for our approach to be more of, here is some guidance that we're getting from the experts on how to participate safely, but ultimately that it's up to the parents and the homeowners whether or not they want to take part in the holiday.
Tony, I'd like to reference, while we do not have any holiday celebration-specific guidance from state level yet, I also went to the CDC website and others can do so as well, going to cdc.gov/coronavirus and searching "holiday celebrations." They cover the holidays coming up in the next three months, and they look at Halloween specifically. And I found that it was a very good common sense direction. And clearly, these, these recommendations are coming from the CDC, so it's a national one-size-fits-all set of, of guidance. And it's also based on the fact that what we do locally is based on our local data. And the, the guidelines given are, as I said, very common sense. And we will use that kind of approach evaluating any event requests and, and compliance plans that are submitted.
What, what kind of guidelines did they give us, John?
From the CDC?
Yeah, for, for Halloween.
Sure, sure.
It was, it was different risk levels. It kind of said, here's the, here's the type of activities that you could participate that present the least risk of transmission. And then it kind of steps up to a moderate risk, and then it steps up to a higher risk. And they kind of give some guidelines. I'm trying to look it up and see if I can share it on my screen.
And the one thing I, I think people should realize too, if you don't want to participate as a homeowner, if you feel like you're at risk, if you're in the high-risk category, all you have to do is turn out your light and, you know, you don't have, you don't have to give out candy to the trick-or-treaters. If you want to participate, keep your house, you know, keep your front lights out and keep your door closed. So, and I think, you know, there'll probably be a fair amount of houses that have decided not to participate.
Agreed. Agreed.
So, I don't know if you can, if you can see this?
Yeah.
I see it.
So, right.
Go ahead, if you want to read, if you want to read some of this stuff there, Deb or John.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, you know, I think the school too will be having, you know, do what they usually do at school, but will probably have some type of a Halloween parade for the kids with, you know, with the masks on going around the school like they usually do. But all of these things here that you can see are the lower-risk activities. You know, I mean, kids love Halloween and, like John said, our numbers, you know, we've been so lucky to keep our data so low. When you, when you get up to the higher and moderate risks, they're always saying, continue to do what you're doing, you know, wash your hands, you know, small groups outside, you know, don't, don't go in those big groups that you see the teenagers going in. And, you know, the parents, I'm sure, are going to be with the kids and they'll, you know, probably keep it. It would be hard, I think, to keep the kids six feet apart, but the big deal is having a mask on. I know in my DPH meeting, they even said if the kids could have a mask on and then if their costume hasn't put it over the mask, that might be a little challenging for some of the young kids.
So, Selectman Canty, I don't know if you can see this, but it says, "Higher-risk activities to avoid are traditional trick-or-treating, drunk-or-treat events, crowded costume parties, haunted houses, tractor rides, things like that." And then a moderate-risk activity as far as it comes to handing candy out, it talks about individually wrapped goodie bags lined up for families to grab and go while you are walking down the street instead of going to the door and that when you're preparing those bags, wash your hands. So, you know, again, I think that our approach would be to relay this information to the public and, and, you know, and kind of promote these guidelines as best we can.
Just, just thinking about this for a second too, as you said, wrapped candy, that could be left outside.
Correct. Correct.
Just, yeah, just trying to come up with some ideas because people are going to be looking for guidance.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe we can, maybe we can post the, these guidelines or link to these guidelines on the Hot Dog Org website. But, I mean, if, as you read down this list, they're all consistent with, you know, what's been preached for the last, you know, eight, nine months, so no surprises here. Personally, I suspect it's going to be a pretty subdued Halloween in Nahat. We certainly have been very lucky, as Deb pointed out, that, that the number of cases in most recent months have been really low, so we've been very fortunate, especially because most of us have to do our grocery shopping in communities with a much higher rate, so whatever people are doing to keep our rates low, keep it up.
John, not that I want to get off of this, we've got some good information, but what about wholesale testing for the town?
While there are, while there are testing events along those lines being discussed, anybody can, can go to, just next door, to Lynn. Seven days a week, there's free testing being conducted. And I myself twice have been notified the very next day as to my results. The longest I've had to wait is, is four days. It's generally two to three. And, and there are two or three sites inland where testing is occurring. So, I, I encourage people to make an appointment. And there are times where I'm, I'm just driving by and I don't see anybody waiting in line, so I'll, I'll pull in. And within a few minutes, you, you can be tested. Otherwise, you, you make an appointment. That ensures that you're, you're getting up to the front of the line at your time instead of waiting until a testing event comes to town. There are quite a few opportunities, not just inland, but any of the communities that are being maintained in the red.
Well, also, we're, I, I've also been in communication with Swamp Scott. I'm speaking with Chief Archer tomorrow for anyone on, on the call that saw the Lynn item with Swamp Scott's free testing. We're going to be joining them on that. So, we'll, we'll hopefully be making an announcement tomorrow or over the weekend or early Monday that the testing being done for free in Swamp Scott is also open to Nahat residents and Nahat employees.
Great.
So, we are, hopefully we'll be able to announce that. I, I just want to work out the final details, make sure we get the schedule right. I want to give a list of employees to Swamp Scott and then, and then anybody with an ID that has their Nahat address, obviously, be able to get a test too. So, you have, so for Nahat, you have the option of going to Lynn, you'll have the option of either going to Lynn or Swamp Scott to get a free test. And that's, you know, you can be asymptomatic.
Thank you.
Deb, do you want to speak a little bit about the flu clinic and how that went today? Hold on. Hit unmute. There you go.
So, yes, so today was day one of our two-day flu clinic. For people over 65, we were at the Nahat Country Club doing an outside drive-thru clinic. We were there all day. We started, the first appointment was nine, the last one was four. Everybody that came had an appointment. It was unbelievable how organized it was. And the DPW was there this morning, they met us there at like 7:15. And they were just great helping us set up the tents and the cones and...
Deb, Deb, this is Jane, and, and several people have told me that was absolutely seamless.
It was wonderful. You know what? No one's going to want to come back inside the building. Everyone loved being in the car. And, you know, the, the team that we have, and they're all volunteers, which is amazing. They, they did such a great job today. And we had, you know, the perfect day, the weather was perfect. We had, that location for an outdoor drive-through is, is wonderful. I mean, it's one-way, there was plenty of room for the cars. We had people waiting, you know, for 10 minutes after the shot. The police were there directing the traffic and everybody was delighted. So, so that was great. Tomorrow, we're doing, oh, Ian, we used every single vaccine that we had. We had 90 high doses and we've used every single one of them. Tomorrow, the same thing, we have 90 vaccines of the reg, of the regular for people 18 to 64. Again, we have, all the, all the appointments have been made and it looks like right now we have about 86 doses accounted for. I have a few people on a waiting list, so I will call them tomorrow and, and let them know that they can come up and get the vaccine. But the weather tomorrow looks like it might be a little more challenging, but we have tents and, you know, we're hoping that, there's no reason why it shouldn't go as smoothly as today, so. Kudos, you know, again, thanks to everybody for helping to make this as great as it turned out to be. I had a, I will admit, I had a little bit of anxiety thinking about it and it was just really great, so. John, we gave you a flu shot. How does your arm feel?
Well, I, I have to congratulate the, the person giving the, the dose. She said it was going to feel like a little pinch and, and I said, okay, let me know when. And she says, oh, it's already done. That's how good she was.
Oh, okay. I think, I think that, that wraps it up.
Well, thank you so much. I'm actually posting, I'm posting on our Facebook page right now, the pictures you sent me, Deb.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions in the Selectment for John or Deb on coronavirus-related issues? Um, not, not for me. I think I heard Deb say that 1,600 Nahaters have been tested already, so that's, you know, a pretty good percentage of the entire population. And congratulations on the well-organized flu vaccine. That's, you know, Nahat continues to provide wonderful services for our citizens, so happy to hear about it.
Well, I'm actually, there's no more questions. I'm going to log off because I do have a little more paperwork to do to get ready for tomorrow, so I will say goodbye now, Ben.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
John? Um, I'll, I'll hang in.
Great. What's next? Opening comments, boat hauling dates. Can read those. There's two hauling dates, October 16th, which is a Friday, I believe, since that's my boat day, and October 17th, Saturday. High tide's at 11:00 AM on Friday and noonish on Saturday. Jocelyn, I guess I'll read this whole thing. They arrive two to four hours before high tide. And their phone number is 978-642-9717. It definitely is, definitely should call as soon as you can, make sure you're on the list. I know Rob Tibbo, our Whorfinger, has provided them with a tentative list already. And the Wharf parking lot will be cleared and marked the night prior, Thursday night. The drive-in flu clinic, I think we covered that, but the day one was today and tomorrow is day two. So, tomorrow, day two, it's a regular dose only, and this is available for folks 18 to 64 years, years old from 11, excuse me, 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon and then 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. An appointment is required, so please call 781-581-7557 and have your insurance card ready when you make that phone call, please. Next on the agenda is new business. We have a vacancy on the school committee meeting. And we are gonna, we're announcing the open, that open seat and the process to fill that application. Tony, maybe you can provide some more details, but...
Yep.
Those will be sent to you and our superintendent, excuse me, by October 14th. You want to add any detail there, Tony?
Yes. So, Section 313 of our town charter requires that when an elected position goes vacant, that it is a joint vote of the Board of Selectmen, remaining members of that elected board or committee, so in this case, the school committee, to fill the seat until the next election day, when the remaining terms, the remaining years of the vacant term would be on the ballot. I'm not really sure how many years are left on the vacant seat, but anybody interested in applying for that can send their, you know, letter of interest and resume to abarletta@hotdog.org, me, or tonyparentozzi@johnsonschool.org. Those emails are on our agenda tonight. And by Wednesday, October 14th. And then what we'll do is we will schedule a joint meeting with the school committee, probably for the first week in November, to have the vote. And that's it. Looking forward to, to a lot of volunteers, you know, wanting to get involved there. And obviously, a huge thank you to Patty Sheehan, the former committee, school committee member that has resigned, has, you know, dedicated a lot of time to the school and did a phenomenal job there, so shout out to Patty as well.
Yes, thank you very much, Patty. I know you'll be missed on the school committee. All right. Next item, item four is ongoing business. Item 4A is preserving East Point continuing discussion. I will just say that some people may have seen the Lynn item article from a couple days ago. Northeastern did send us a letter consisting of an offer and asking for a prompt reply. We met in executive session on Tuesday night and voted unanimously to reject that offer as it was presented. We are, in our response letter, are encouraging Northeastern to return to the table and discuss an offer that would be more consistent with the town's desires. So, I guess that's, that's my summary on that. If there's any questions... If there's any questions, we'd be happy to take those. I guess we'll take any questions during Citizens Forum. And then we have vote to approve the FY21 trash bills and the changes to the distribution and abatements. I think, Dan, maybe you have?
I can share my screen.
All right, the wording for the motion.
Dan has the wording for the motion. I'm going to share my screen. Hold on a second.
So Gene, maybe, oh, you're on the phone. So I'll read the motion, Gene, and you can second.
Sure.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Do you, can you read the motion and then Chairman can so move? And Gene can second, and then we can get into discussion?
I can. Let me pull, give me a moment to pull it up and give me a second or two. I gotta find it.
Mm-hmm. I think it was just simply move to approve the Nahat trash rates and abatements for fiscal year '21 as presented, something like that.
Yeah, okay, I'm ready whenever you are.
Go ahead.
The motion would be this. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the 2020 trash rates and abatements as outlined in the document entitled Town of Nahat Trash Rates and Abatements 2020. So that's the motion.
So moved.
There you go.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we discussed this at our last meeting, and since then, there's been a Linitem article about it. And we've been really having this discussion for about a year now. And this is part of the slower, but longer and more involved public process that we're trying to accomplish to combat increased costs of waste and recycling services. As discussed at the last meeting, one thing that we're, what we've done here is tried to change how we distribute the cost of the services in a more fair and equitable way to the ratepayers in town. And in the past, we had legitimate, lawful, classified, two-family, three-family, four-family, commercial, commercial with resident units in town, all getting the same $345 rate for trash. Even though you had, you know, some, like it has, for example, you have a four-family paying the same as a one-family. So we took a look at how could we spread the cost over a little bit more fair, a little bit more, a little bit more targeted towards how much trash is actually being produced by those households without actually requiring a pay-as-you-go type system? And we looked at what's the average per person, per household in the state and in the county? And we came up with the rates that you see in front of you today. So before, you know, a four-family home would get one bill for $345, and now they're going to get one bill for $1,400, and it's distributed amongst those four units. So each family is contributing equally to the total cost of the services. Whereas before, as I mentioned, you know, a single family was paying the same as a four-family. So they'll still get one bill, it'd just be, it's based on per person in the household, essentially. The next rate is for commercial. So for a parcel that has a commercial business on it that does not use a, no, I'm sorry. So if it's simply a commercial business, they get charged $428. And then if it's a combined commercial with residencies in the same parcel, it's broken down there with private trash, with R1 and Town Trash, or with R2 and Town Trash. And then the idea here is that everyone would get paid, get billed these rates, and then there's abatements available. So for instance, a commercial business with private trash, meaning they don't utilize curbside pickup, they would be eligible for a 68% reduction on that $428 fee, plus the $20 per unit of residencies. So because they're still contributing to, they're still contributing to the amount of trash that we have here in town, and they're still enjoying the benefits of the services that we provide here in town. They would still contribute somewhat to the total system, just not as much as someone who's getting curbside pickup. So this is, you know, very well thought out by Mary Lowe, Sheila Hamilton, and Dan Scripp. And helps us get one step closer to a more equitable distribution. And then the next step, over the next year, we'll be talking about potentially changing how we collect our trash, which could have a positive impact on the total cost of, for the services and lead to potential decreases to the households in town, for the ratepayers. Any questions?
Seems like a pretty fair, a fair solution. And, you know, I know a lot of work went into it to condense down to this very simple form here. So one thing I want to say is that, as a, next June, we could be seeing much more significant than how our trash is collected and that sort of thing. We want to, there aren't too many people on the line today, but we want to get as much public input as possible between now and, let's say, April or so on what approach we want to lock in contractually next June. So talk to your neighbors and encourage them to let their feelings known on what they feel is the best approach. We want to avoid the surprise that Swampscot had recently, where they changed their system and people didn't feel like they're properly informed. So we definitely want the public to participate in voicing their opinion on how the changes will look next year.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, because that is very important. That's the goal here is, I know it's, I know we're not going to be able to get to everybody, but we're doing our best. We're trying to, we'll try to promote that process as much as possible. So if we have no other questions or comments, take a roll call vote.
Yep. If there's no further discussion, take a vote. All in favor? Josh Hantrum, aye?
Jane Canty, aye?
And Mr. Callen is not on the call.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see, what's next?
Next is Kelly Green. Maybe you want to provide that update, Tony?
Yep. So we have, we've extended the deadline that was September 30th to, for a two-week extension. Essentially, that was because of a procurement requirement. So when we reached out to the Inspector General's office to ask them if we, you know, what do we, we really wanted, the intention all along was that the golf committee would be the reviewers and graders of the bids that we received. But we didn't include that in our original posting. And so by doing that midway through, it requires to, it requires us to add two weeks to the total timeframe. And that's what we did.
Okay. And just in case it's not obvious for anybody on the line, this is in regards to a lease request for proposal for leasing the Kelly Green's restaurant and golf course. The current, we see, we see his term is expiring October 31st. So a request for proposal has been posted for any entities interested in leasing that property. So that's the background.
Dan, do you have anything to add?
No, it's nothing unusual. We're just adopting a boots and, or a belt and suspenders approach, making sure that we're inoculating ourselves in any sort of bid protests once a successful bidder is chosen. So we're just making sure we're covering all our bases and as we move forward.
Okay.
All right. Next up is the Town Administrator's Report. Just wanted to mention one thing that not listed here, but there was a lot of bedlam in the harbor with the storm the other day. A few boats broke loose. Most were rescued without too much damage. But one big blue trawler did wash up on the rocks. I was out of town, so didn't witness it firsthand. But most importantly, they had a fuel leak and oil leak. And I believe that was tended to by Clean Harbors, Tony?
Yes. Yes. So I'm trying to pull up my information about that. Here we go.
And then also not on this agenda is the sewer main break, but I'm sure you'll give us an update on that as well.
Yes. Yeah, when we posted this meeting, that chaos had not ensued yet.
A lot could happen in the
Right. So at about 7:30 in the morning on, what was that? Was this yesterday? This was yesterday, Tuesday, right? What's today?
Wednesday.
So it would have been, no, so it was Wednesday. So yesterday, around 7:30 in the morning, we had a powerboat break free from its mooring and rested on Tudor Beach. And then several other boats also were in trouble in the Tudor Wharf mooring area. A 16-foot sailboat had broken free. A 32-foot sailboat had dragged its mooring and was in danger of grounding out. And the 50-foot trawler broke free from its mooring and hit a 23, hit and swamped a 23-foot lobster boat, while also dragging another 32-foot schooner towards the rocks. So on its way through the harbor, because due to that storm, it did cause some damage to other boats. Ended up on the rocks and experienced a lot of damage. And like you said, a undetermined amount of diesel fuel from one of the tanks onboard broke free and into the harbor. So Coast Guard was notified immediately by the harbor master. The Mass DEP and Coast Guard were dispatched. They were on site by noon. CTO was also on site. And Clean Harbor, Clean Harbor Environmental Services was on site immediately, or as fast as they could get there, to remove remaining fuel from the vessel. And all fuel has since been removed from the harbor, the harbor by Clean Harbor's Environmental Services. So it, the, unfortunately, for the owners of that boat, it experienced so much damage. And it was scheduled to be hauled out of the water, I think, tomorrow. And now unfortunately, is not going to survive. And either tomorrow, depending on weather and sea conditions, or over the weekend or Monday, that boat is going to be cut up and removed from the rocks. We also, you know, we also had a significant amount of damage around town to trees, tree limbs, power lines, poles. Number of our library roof experienced a significant amount of damage. Our DPW building roof had some damage. We had our insurance company in town today taking a look at both so that we can make those repairs quickly. And then, of course, this all happened, you know, the day after the sewer main break that occurred on Tuesday. So we had, you know, with the sewer break, we had, we were approved for borrowing through the SRF program earlier this year. And it required a town meeting vote, which would have happened in May, but because of COVID, got postponed to September. So Saturday, the Annapolis Meeting approved the borrowing. And Monday, we reached out to SRF program to begin filing paperwork for the borrowing. And then Tuesday, we had, we experienced a sewer break on the lineway. So it's pretty extensive break in a very difficult spot. And we are, the job's completed now, but it was about a two-day job, given the location. It was in between an electrical duct and a gravity sewer main about 14 feet deep under a pretty busy intersection on the linway. You know, our team does such a good job, unfortunately, because it's happened so many times over the last three years, on acting quickly. So it was, we had it under control fairly quickly, and the repair was done fairly quickly. But this one's a little bit more expensive than the last one we had. And certainly, you know, we got to make the patch, or we got to do what we have to do there. But unfortunately, you know, it's, since 2017, I think we've had five sewer breaks in between U-Haul and the clock tower. We've probably spent about $2 million, and we've only repaired probably about five feet of pipe. Compared to the job that we're planning on doing, which the barn was approved for, is a $6 million job, and that'll repair, a 50-year repair from the rotary all the way to the treatment plant. So it hurts, you know? It hurts when you're spending that much money on emergency repairs. It also hurts too, because we, you know, we have been, we've been contacted by Mass DEP. contacted by Mass DEP, um, have been alerted that we, uh, we may be seeing a draft, um, enforcement order from DEP requiring us to meet certain planning, um, and certain, um, action items by targeted dates. I feel comfortable that we're going to be able to accomplish all those requirements and that we'll be able to meet all those requirements. Um, you know, of course, but, uh, but, you know, you have five breaks in a couple of years. And certainly the state, uh, is concerned about that and wants to make sure that we're getting, you know, doing our part to make sure that that gets fixed, which we are. It's just.
Tony, what's the likelihood that we're going to continue to experience these breaks until we, we finally resolve this issue?
Uh, it's hard to tell. It's really hard to tell. Um, you never know when it's going to come. Uh, hopefully, hopefully, knock on wood, we don't have another one before we get into the full repair. Um, which hopefully happens over the winter. You know, maybe we're, we have it procured and contracted by the end of November and we're breaking ground sometime in December or January. Um, but it's really hard to tell.
Who is the company you had in there? The, the fiction, the, um, type thing?
Uh, S. Grenice and Sons.
Tell you, they did a great job.
They do excellent work. Excellent work. We, they know our system pretty well by now, unfortunately.
They're, they're getting very experienced, but, um, you know, Tony, you mentioned that, um, you know, the schedule for the, uh, the slip lining repair. Um, thank goodness it's, uh, you know, hopefully coming up this winter. And, uh, also thank goodness, um, the $4.9 million borrowing was approved by the voters, uh, last weekend. Um, hopefully that, those two facts help with DEP and minimizing, um, you know, their punitive, uh, damages. So uh, we got, we have a plan and it's very close to being executed and it's funded and, uh, it's too bad we couldn't, you know, it couldn't have been done before this break, but, uh, hopefully after this winter, all this will be behind us for, uh, 50 years.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's anybody on the phone that'll be around for the next repair. Uh, maybe you, Tony.
Hopefully, oh, hopefully it is in 50 years. Um, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, um, jinx us. I cheered, I think I cheered too much after the town meeting vote passed. Um, and may have jinxed that whole situation. So, um, so that's where we are with the sewer main. We thank all the residents, uh, for their, um, help with conserving water during that time. Um, and I have, what else? Let me see on the, uh, so annual town meeting review, um, you know, our town meeting on Saturday went very smooth. Um, a huge thank you to John and Deb and the department heads, police fire, DPW, um, the moderator, the clerk, the FinCom, our accounting, our town hall staff. I mean, so many people contributed to the success of that meeting, that the, the residents, um, the volunteers, I mean, everybody had, everybody played a role and we, and it was, you know, the weather worked out. So, you know, shout out to Mother Nature for helping us. Um, and it just went, it went very smooth. So, you know, it, it certainly was, it was costly. Um, but it was healthy and it was safe and that's what's important. So, um, you know, we, we got a lot of necessary things done there and just want to thank, um, everyone that's, that was involved, the board of selectmen as well, of course. Um, legal, you know, there were so many different people that were involved or had a role in it. So thank you to everybody. Um, that was very successful. Um, our streetlight conversion project update. So we have probably about a quarter of the, um, materials delivered in town already. They're kind of coming in separate shipments. Um, and as soon as all of the new LED Cobra heads for our streetlights are in, the job will begin. We're hoping next week. Um, and it's probably about a three-week project. So we do have a ton of streetlights that are, um, you know, that are out already and we're in need of repair anyways. We've gotten quite a few people making those requests. It, it's coming and, um, we're excited about it. It should be done. Like I said, it should be done by the end of the month. Um, water repair projects. So over the last month or so, um, our engineer Kleinfelder and our contractor Cadillo and Sons have been making much needed water repairs to Furbush Road, Walton Road, Howe Road and Mills Terrace. Um, they've done an excellent job. Uh, if anybody hasn't, has been down Walton or Furbush, uh, you'll see that they, they, um, they patched the street. Um, went in such a, they actually, what they did was they backed, after making their repairs, they backfilled and then they milled the street a little bit wider than the trench that they actually used and paved. And then they brought in fresh loom for the, for the edges of the roadway. Um, cleaned it up very nice, very impressed with the work that they've done. We're very happy with them and our engineers. Um, all that work is essentially completed except Mills Terrace. Uh, I think we are waiting on a pressure test for Mills Terrace. And then as soon as we get that, they will finish their services. Um, and do the, you know, repair the street and be done with it all. So, uh, that work is, is, um, going very well. Um, Parrot and Fallon Way projects, Parrot Road, Little Nahat is complete. Um, the DPW, uh, again, did an amazing job there. Uh, from what I understand, the residents are very pleased um, with that work that's completed. They rebuilt, uh, the, um, retaining wall and the end of the road that was, uh, experienced damage from the 2018 storm. So long overdue. Um, but the, the job came out great. The, they got less of a job on Fa, on, uh, Fallon, but still some, uh, needed repairs on the wall and on the street at the end. Um, and then once that's done, they'll be coming back and, um, the, working on the revetment. So we put some pretty large boulders over the side when the storm was, uh, here and I wasn't here, but my understanding is it was, uh, the, the wall that given loose. So we, so we dumped some large boulders over the side to help break up the wave action. And they're not really consistent with the existing revetment in that area. So what, what we will be doing is breaking those up and replacing them. So it's consistent with the existing revetment. Um, so that work is, is almost done, going well. Um, Short Beach sandbags, uh, um, if anyone has noticed, large white sandbags on the, uh, entrances of, uh, Short Beach. Uh, DPW acquired, um, quite a few sandbags like that, uh, to use instead of Jersey barriers, uh, as a protection, as a, as a protection in the meantime, uh, while we are, uh, before we get the project, the MVP project underway. And those sandbags are going to do a much better job at, um, uh, protecting against storm surge than the Jersey barriers do. So, um, it's a great improvement. We're going to be using, using those, uh, all over, you know, wherever we need them in town. Um, that's, I think that's all I got. I'm good. I think that's it.
Hey, Tony?
Yeah.
Just, just to pass it along, a couple of the lobstermen said to extend their thank you. The power washing that ramp down at the wharf makes a big difference.
They are welcome. I'm curious, after that storm, it probably needs it again already.
Yeah, it may. I was, I was doing it and it was, it was very clean prior to the storm.
Yeah, it's not so much, uh, the cleanliness, but the non-slipperiness. So, uh, I was down there on Saturday, Saturday before the town meeting. Yeah, we hauled the dory club. And, uh, uh, the very end, which, you know, is below the nor, you know, normal low tide mark. I slipped a little bit and I was like, oh, I used to slot, slip all the time. But, um, I could see the pressure wash mark. So definitely appreciate, a lot safer. So very nice. It, you know, it's little things like that and, um, you know, make us really appreciate all the stuff the DPW does. I also went down the Heritage Trail, um, I think last Saturday also before the town meeting and, uh, it's beautiful. I mean, it's amazing.
Yeah, it looks really good. Lodge Park looks really good too. They did, they've done, done a lot of work up at Lodge Park.
Yep. I'm excited to get the, um, the work, uh, done on, um, not Bailey's Hill, but, um, uh, Fort, was it Fort Rockman? The, the backside of the bunker there. Uh, you know, for which we have that CPC application in. Be really exciting to get that area cleaned up, get some of the debris out of there and the invasive species. So everything's coming along. Pretty happy.
Yeah. All that stuff. Yeah, they're doing a great job. They're doing a great job. We're very lucky.
Um, just one thing before we go to citizens forum, seeing Dan Scrip and Alice Cord in the line reminds me, um, about the, um, she bought the Valley Road, uh, linden trees, um, is there anything, uh?
I have not looked into that yet.
Okay.
Um, so I have nothing to add at the moment.
All right. I'm just maybe, uh, for, um, our meeting October 22nd, maybe we can have an update then.
Okay.
What, what is that on?
Um, Alice brought up the question of, uh, the, the linden trees that lie in Valley, Valley Road and whether they're considered part of Nahat's shade trees. I think we need, probably need some input from Mark Carboni, our, our, um, tree warden. Um, so anyway, just wanted to make sure we have an update, um, for our next meeting on the 22nd.
Speaking of Valley Road and, and there's something that I think I need to talk with Tony about because I think this has been an issue in the past, but apparently there's, there's a, uh, location there that is less than up to the standards of what we would consider to be acceptable to the town. So, uh, Tony, you and I can talk about that and then we can bring it back out front if we need to, um, and we can do that next week.
Sure. Absolutely. Is it, is it related to the trees or is it something else?
It, it's something else.
Okay. Well, let me know. We'll, we'll get on it.
Thank you.
Um, just one other thing that, um, I didn't have on my list here either is, uh, we, you know, Bobby Joe's last day was Saturday, so we don't have, um, anybody in that position at the moment. We have received a decent amount of, um, applications and, uh, for, to fill that, to, to fill that spot, but, um, just, you know, I'm asking, I guess, the, uh, community to understand that we're a little, um, short-staffed at the moment and, um, we'll do our best to keep up with the incoming calls and questions and, um, requests. Uh, we are, but we are a little short-staffed at the moment in the town hall in that thought.
I think, I think, I think we've publicly, um, acknowledged and thanks, thank Bobby Joe for the wonderful job she's done, but just in case, thanks a lot, Bobby Joe.
You're here. Um, any, that's it. That's all. That's, do you want to go to citizens forum?
Yep. So the next item on the agendas is citizens forum.
Don't have anyone in, uh, chat. Um, so if anybody on the line, um, wants to unmute themselves, you have the power to do so and just say your name and address and whatever it is you might want to bring in front of the board.
Going once. Looks like a quiet night from the citizens.
All right then. So next week, um, we have two executive sessions, one on Tuesday, one on Thursday. We typically meet, we would typically be meeting on the 15th, the following Thursday, two weeks from now. Um, however, we have, our next meeting is going to be our, when we set the tax rate. And that, that is a tax classification hearing, which requires certain publishing, um, notice and requirements there with the line item and certain dates. So it pushes us out to the following, the 22nd, I believe it is. So that'll be our next board, our next open public board of selectmen meeting.
All right. Anything else from anyone? All right. In that case, uh, I move that the board of selectmen adjourn. The
I'll slip in that.
Twenty
Go ahead.
Any, uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor? Josh Hantrum, aye.
Jane Canty, aye.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye.